All right. Let's see, here we go. It looks like we're streaming live. Hello, Counselor Bassan.
Hello, thank you for having me.
Oh, it is so exciting to see you. Thank you so much for joining us today. I am simultaneously trying to talk to you and get my phone over to where I can view the comments. Because we're doing this event with Girl Scouts from all over Albuquerque and from from all over the country, and we want to be able to ask you questions. So let's just start out as we are, as we are getting things going here. Let's just start out by welcoming everybody, welcoming you. If you are joining us for this discussion, this chat with Counselor Bassan, go ahead in the comments and just start by telling us your name and your grade. Is that what we should ask? Okay, great. So go ahead and start by telling us in the comments your name and your grade. I am Rebecca Latham. I'm the CEO of Girl Scouts of New Mexico Trails. And Counselor Bassan is with us. Hold on, I'm gonna try to take this down, but I don't know that anybody that we can see you. I only see me on Facebook Live. So what have we done here?
If I start to speak, does it switch over to speaker view?
Maybe. Let's try that.
Or if you have gallery view, it should have both of us at the same time, I think.
Okay, I just, oh, yep, you're right. It does work when you talk. Okay. But I think I did just switch to gallery view. I see, let's see. We've got a junior from Connecticut who's with us. Crystal's here. Great. Okay, good. Now we're in business. We're starting to get, we're starting to get some feedback. So yeah, there's a little bit of a lag time between, between our conversation and the questions as they come in on Facebook. But luckily, we had a lot of girls send in their questions in advance. So let us get started as, as you are adding your, your name and your grade into the, the comments. Again, my name is Rebecca Latham. I'm the CEO of Girl Scouts of New Mexico Trails. This is
Alana, and I'm a Brownie of Girl Scouts.
She's a Brownie for Girl Scouts. Counselor Bassan, do you mind if, if the rest of us get started? And you're welcome to join us if you'd like, but we'd like to get started with by doing the, the Girl Scout Promise. Is that okay?
I think that's lovely.
Ready? "On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law." Counselor Bassan, I probably should have sent you a refresher on that.
I sort of remembered it, sorry.
Great. And for, for everyone who's tuning in, you know, we've got lots of folks watching. Counselor Bassan, Counselor Bassan is a former Girl Scout volunteer herself. So she's pretty familiar with what we do. Were you a Girl Scout when you grew up?
I was a Girl Scout for a short time, but yes, I was. I remember being a Brownie.
Wonderful. Well, let's get started by, I think quickly, we're going to review what it is that we're talking to you about and why. For all the Girl Scouts that are watching us, this interview is part of our Inside Government Badge for Juniors. And so this is what we're going to be working on today. You know, right there. Squeaky leather chair. I'm going to review just some of the steps to get your Junior Inside Government Badge. You don't have to be a junior to be participating in this interview. But if you are a junior and you don't have your Inside Government Badge by the time we finish today, then you're going to be one step closer. We have a list of questions that girls have submitted that Alana and I are going to just kind of go back and forth and ask you about. And, and, and then we'll get into any other questions from, from the girls who are watching. So on the citizen, I'm sorry, on the Inside Government Badge, there are five steps. Decide what being an active citizen means to you. Go inside government, look into laws, report on the issues, and get involved in government. And with you today, Counselor, what we're talking about with the Go Inside Government is, is interviewing an elected official. Who gets to decide some of the things that, that impact us as citizens? And it's, the answer is you. You and your counterparts in city government. So that's what we are trying to get to today. We've got lots of, lots of Girl Scout friends watching with more on the way. Let's get started with what I bet is, you know, undoubtedly, well, actually, no, first, I digress. Tell us a little bit about yourself, Counselor Bassan.
Well, my name is Brooke Bassan, and this is, I am in what I'm going to call First Grade of being a City Councilor, because this is my first year of a four-year term. I was elected at a runoff election in December last year, and I was sworn in in January. So I'm about a short six months into it. And I have four kids. I live in Albuquerque. I am otherwise a household CEO, living with my family and taking care of the house. Now, in addition to helping out in our district and in the city. So you know, as a City Councilor, if, if I can tell you a little bit about that, a City Councilor is the one in charge. There's nine of us in Albuquerque. We have nine different districts and the city is divided up. And nine of us get to decide the different laws that are created for the city. And then there's also the budget that we get to agree on and figure out, which is going to be a whole new kind of challenge this year with COVID-19 happening and everything. So there's the executive branch, which is the mayor and, and his administration. And then there's the legislative branch, which is what the city council does. So I'm very honored that I won and that I get to help out and I get to represent in our city.
And, and we're, we're thrilled to have you in office. And thank you again for representing the, your constituents. And also, again, for spending time here today. You'll have to forgive Alana. She is enthralled by the, she's reading the comments as they come in on Facebook. So you can be our, our Facebook moderator. And she's, she's giving us, she's giving us ourselves thumbs up and high fives. So, and heart. Why don't we get started by asking Counselor Bassan the questions that came in? You're up first.
How did you become a City Councilor?
Good question. So to become a City Councilor, there's a whole long process of campaigning that's involved. It started with, I had to get 500 people in my district that are registered voters to sign a petition and to say that they want me to be on the ballot. And I had to decide if I was going to be privately or publicly financed, which means that during the campaign process, how did I want to run my campaign? Using taxpayer dollars and at a set amount? Or using as much money as I can raise, as long as people would be willing to give it to me? So I decided to be publicly financed, meaning that I also had to get almost $405 donations from registered voters in the district. I have to say, I didn't think it would be so hard to get $5 from people, and it's very challenging. So it was a lot of work, but I got to meet a lot of awesome people, and I made it happen. Then it's a matter of going door to door and knocking. At least that's when I did it. Now it's, it's very different. But last year, when I was campaigning, I got to knock on doors. I got to meet people. I went to neighborhood association meetings. I went to city council meetings to watch and be involved and see what it's all about. I made sure to answer phone calls. I sent out a lot of mailers. I even got a billboard, which is kind of weird, but I did it. Never thought I'd see myself on a billboard, but it was good because it's all about making sure people know who you are and what you look like, and that you really want to do good things to help them out. So in November, we had the election, and I almost had enough votes to win. So I got to keep up with my campaign for another five weeks. And after that, we had a runoff election where instead of three of us on the ballot, there were only two. And I won that, that election. So now here I am.
Wonderful. And, and you mentioned, you mentioned giving people to give you little bits of money or getting people to give you, to give you a lot of money. Why do you need money to run for office?
Well, so if you're going to send out, and I don't know how many of the girls have seen the mailers that come in the mail with the candidate and their information and what they stand for. But in order to get those out and to pay for those, the design of them, the creation and the mailing, that's one thing. But then there's also making sure that you can get, you know.
You have to look so miserable, Alana. Look at yourself, silly girl.
But you know, then yard signs, you know, we had to buy yard signs. I made sure that we had a few shirts for the people that were helping go door knocking. You know, there's different costs involved with making sure for printing and for notifying people. Some people charge for phones. We were lucky enough that we had, we had some of that covered. So in order to run your campaign, the more you want people to know about you, you have to find different avenues in order to pay for it. So you need some money to do that. And I don't have enough of my own money to do it, so I asked for friends, family, neighbors, and other constituents to help me out with it.
So it sounds like you, it, you have to, you have to really want to be in, to be in office. That it's not something that if you're kind of, if you're kind of thinking you might want to be an elected official, that, 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 that it's not for you. Because you got, it sounds like you got to get out there and really work hard, huh?
You definitely have to work hard. It's definitely something that if you're kind of thinking you want to do it, maybe find out how to volunteer on someone else's campaign first and find out how to help them so that you can learn how to go about it, so that you can decide if you really want to put in the work. Because there were weekends that I would walk for 10 hours a day, and I would walk at least 25,000 steps. You know, and it was in the summer, and it was hot. So I enjoyed it. I enjoyed meeting people. But it's more work than I imagined, and I'm very happy I did it. But I suggest if people are just kind of wondering about it, that maybe it would be even better for them to, to help volunteer on someone else's until they know for sure that they're really dedicated and interested. And we had kids go with us, and we had kids help. So you know, all are welcome on a good campaign.
Great. Wonderful. Well, we have some folks on Facebook asking if they can ask questions. Yes, absolutely. You can add your questions to the comments there. Again, we're talking with City Councilor Brooke Bassan, who is a first-term counselor in Albuquerque. Alana is our Brownie facilitator or our Brownie helper. And she's going to ask her next question as part of this interview. We were able to get questions that came in from girls from across New Mexico. And we've got girls that are, that are here from, from other states watching too. So Alana, what's your second question there?
What is your favorite part about being a City Councilor?
Oh, my favorite part about being a City Councilor is helping people. And you know, I'm learning so many different things that I had no idea about beforehand. But people email and call all the time for lots of different things that I didn't even really think about. You know, I never really called my City Councilor for a lot of these things. And now I'm getting called for them, so it's a good learning experience for me. I'm learning a lot more about how our city works, but I'm also being able to help people and solve some of the problems they have. You know, we have people that called. One example, I had somebody call because he's living next to a house that has a lot of trash and dog waste in the yard next door and trying to get that cleaned up for a long, long time, and the people were not responsive and helpful. So I was able to go ahead and connect that neighbor and that constituent with the right resources, and it's gotten better already. So this person's life, life has changed because now they're not living next to such filth, and, and it's not so disturbing for them.
And you keep using the word, oh, sorry, you keep using the word constituent. What is a constituent?
Good question. Good question. So constituent are the people that live in my district that I serve directly. So I'm a public servant. I'm an elected official, and I serve the public. I don't like to say I'm a politician. That's not, that's not really what I got in this for. I got into being a City Councilor because I wanted to help. And a constituent are all of the people, whether they voted for me or not, whether they even can vote or not. So if they're kids, if they're, if they're grownups, if they're anyone in between, they are my constituents so that I have a duty to be able to serve and help them.
That's great. That means that you and all your Girl Scout sisters are constituents that live, that live in the district that Ms. Counselor, Ms. Counselor Bassan represents. Okay, another question we got in was, what are your work hours? And have you ever been interrupted after hours to deal with an emergency? Have you ever had to wake up in the middle of the night because of your work?
Well, so the easiest one for me is to say, so far, I have not woken up in the middle of the night because of my work. But my hours, there is no requirement, a minimum requirement of a number of hours that I have to put in as an elected official. So at least in Albuquerque, elected officials don't have to work 40 full hours a week or whatnot. I will say, though, that I definitely work probably more than that because I respond to emails, I get phone calls, I used to, and hopefully will soon again be going to many meetings. So it definitely takes up a lot of time. It's, it's, I would not hesitate to say it's a full-time job. And then also, when I say that I go to meetings and neighborhood association meetings and these emails and phone calls, on the first and third Monday of, on the first and third Monday of every month, we have our city council meetings. And that's where we actually vote on the legislation, and we have an agenda. But then there's also committees that each counselor sits on here in Albuquerque. So I currently sit on, I think, four other committees. So we have monthly meetings for all of those as well that decide different legislation that will be recommended or not recommended to the council. And then the full council will go ahead and vote on that on the first and third Monday of the month. So there's a lot of preparation, and let me tell you what, there is a lot of reading. It's a lot of reading involved. So if, if you like to read, this might be something that you really want to consider.
And so let's talk about that. Why, why so much reading? Why is it so important for you to, to do so much reading?
Well, so there's different laws that get put in, or there's different resolutions and recommendations. And you know, I didn't want to become a City Councilor just to read a title of something and make a decision on behalf of all the constituents in my district. Or which will also then affect all of Albuquerque, right? Because at our meetings, we vote on, you know, I vote what I think my district would really prefer and really want, and what they see fit, and what I've heard from their emails. But all of us collectively will end up deciding what happens for Albuquerque. And I will take that very seriously. So I read through all of the documents. And some of them are two pages, some of them are 15 pages.
Oh.
These, these documents have all of the different details for what we're voting on. So I don't think it's right to make any kind of vote in anything if you're not educated on what you're voting on. So you need to be sure that you know, and in order to do that, you need to read it.
Counselor Bassan, would you give me a moment to address the, the Brownie in the room?
I sure will.
If you are going to be a part of this, I need you to, to sit still, focus. And when you ask Counselor Bassan a question, it's appropriate for you to pay attention when she answers. If you don't want to be a part of this, then I'm going to scoot you out of the frame. You want to go? You just want me to ask all these questions that you have? No, sorry. Live, live broadcasting, everybody.
And mine aren't home right now. My kids are out with their dad. So I got, I got in a situation where I have a little extra quiet.
Excellent. Well, we're going to get back to the questions. Alana, thank you for participating. And let's get to the next question about libraries.
Who, who gets to decide when libraries will reopen?
So some of the libraries in Albuquerque have reopened, some have not. So I did look online, and you can go on and look up for Albuquerque Public Libraries. I did, you know, I'm, I was trying to think, and I know that we're going for New Mexico, but since I'm really focused here on Albuquerque, I was able to see that the one closest to me is Cherry Hills Library. And another one that's nearby is Erna Ferguson. And both of those libraries are open Sunday through Thursday right now. And the main library is open Monday through Friday. But I think that, you know, right now, the governor is the one that's really dictating and helping out to understand and make this selection and the, and the choices for our health and safety of the state. So when she says things can start reopening, then each of the city's mayors is the one that chooses after that how they're going to decide to follow. So right now in Albuquerque, our mayor is waiting on what the recommendations are from the governor. And based off of her recommendations, he makes a decision here. And some of them are open, and I know that they're really working hard to keep it clean and to keep the social distancing down. I do believe that no computers are being used right now. If you, people need to go to the library for that, it's not available at this time due to the, due to the health factors for COVID-19 and what we need to do.
Okay, good to know. Well, I'm, that's thrilling to know that they are starting to reopen because we are running out of books here after being here for so long. It's going to be good to be able to get some more books. Okay, you want to go ahead and ask the next question about playgrounds and parks?
What City Councilor, what do City Council, what do City Councilors do to help parks and play places safe and clean for kids to play on?
So the city of Albuquerque has the Parks and Recreation Department, but City Councilors get involved. And one specific example I can give you that I'm really excited about is that, you know, I worked with the state legislature to find some money earlier this year. And that's something else I wanted to make sure to talk about, so I was thinking this is a perfect segue. City Councilors go up and work with, work with the state in order to try to secure some capital outlay money every year. And this year, some of what we were able to secure is new shade structures for some of the parks in our district and repairs to some of the different playground equipment. So I'm really hoping that we get to put those in and start it all up, and then let everyone start playing on them real soon.
Yay! We can't wait until it's safe to be able to go play at the playgrounds again. Okay, what is the next question? This, this one came from one of your, one of the juniors in your troop from, this one came from Emma.
What amount of city?
Funding.
Funding goes towards water, sanity, flood control.
Water sustainability. That's a big one. That's a big one. Water sustainability and flood control.
Okay, good.
Albuquerque working on that.
I am very thankful that you sent some of these questions in advance because that took a little bit of research. So now I too have learned a little more today. Thank you, Girl Scouts. So I'm going to read from my notes because I don't want to get it wrong. But in Albuquerque, approximately, I, I really wish I could have you guys guess the number. If we were sitting in a room together, I would say, girls, how much money do you really think goes to stormwater maintenance? So all the, the water that goes into the gutters, that goes down to the river, and inspection for pollution. I would say, girls, how much money do you think the city of Albuquerque spends on making sure just those happen every year?
What do you think?
What do you think, Alana?
$50,000 is her guess.
So thankful that you had a guess. We spend approximately $2.5 million every year in the city of Albuquerque for stormwater maintenance and inspection for pollution. That, that was kind of my reaction.
Wait, say that again. How much?
Approximately $2.5 million.
Wow.
I'm not done, though.
Oh, there's more. But wait, there's more.
Yes, this is a really good question. So there's something called AMASCA. And that is the Albuquerque Metro Arroyo Flood Control Authority. So that one is what, so keep in mind, this is the Metropolitan Flood Control, the flood control that we do. So we're talking like more of the Arroyos and everything, right? That one is 12 to 25 million dollars that gets spent to make sure all of that keeps up and running.
Okay, so just, just to show you how far off we were. So we've had guesses that came in for $200,000-ish from Joanna. Amy Jo says 20,000. Fran says maybe 12,000. And you just blew our minds on how much, how much money we're putting into sustainability and flood control.
Yes, and my mind was blown as well, except for I've, I've gotten a little bit more used to these numbers as, as the days go on with what I'm learning. Because the city of Albuquerque before this year happened, because I think we all know this year is going to change a lot with everybody's budgeting. But as of 2019, the city of Albuquerque's budget was just, just over $1 billion. So we would spend, $1.1 billion is what we budgeted last year for spending and keeping our city up and running and paying for all of this stuff, plus police and first responders, the fire department, lights, streets, you know, parks, libraries, the zoo. So, so that's
The zoo.
That's part of cultural services with the city of Albuquerque, yes.
Oh, and you also have like the balloon, the balloon museum, right, in Balloon Fiesta Park?
So, yes, so that's in my district. So Balloon Fiesta is in, is in my district. And I think Alana is mind-blown over here. So, and then there's also, you know, so we have a lot going on there because we have the balloon museum, but we also have all the other museums, right? And we work very closely with Explorer Science Museum. But I have one more number for you.
Okay.
Okay, so flood control management, that's different. That's a whole section that was put out a little bit to the side instead of just the Arroyo Flood Control or Storm Water Maintenance. This is Flood Control Management, and we spend between $5 and $6 million. So there's a lot to do with water here.
And so, and that's interesting because, you know, we, we do put a lot, it sounds like a huge number, you know, of how much money goes into water, especially, you know, like we're in a drought state. But then, when you, you mentioned it's a $1.1 billion budget, that's really just kind of a fraction, huh?
It is. And I mean, that's where it's going to be really, really tough decisions that have to get made this next year as we start projecting where we're going to have to make cuts for the newest budget based off of the fact that in our state, and particularly in our city, we rely heavily on our gross receipts tax. And because of COVID and because of the stay-at-home orders that we've been under, people haven't been able to shop and spend money, which means that we haven't been able to make money as a city. So because we fall in line with needing all of that for our funding, we're not going to have as much money to spend next year until we start recouping. So it's going to be much lower, I think, than $1.1 billion for, for 2021, for 2021.
Alana has three more questions for you that have come in about, about getting involved and working through conflicts, student council, and getting your advice. But, and then I have a question for you about, about what girls can do with their local governments for their bronze, silver, or gold awards. But real quick, before you go on, we're talking about the budget. And again, if you're just joining us, this is City Councilor Brooke Bassan, who is with the city of Albuquerque. We are working on our Junior Inside Government Badge. This is step two, which is we're interviewing a government official. And, you know, welcome to everybody who's just joining us. Yes, you can absolutely ask a question in the chat box, and then we'll get to it soon. But before we go on, you, we were talking about flood control and money, and that that's a portion of the budget. What are the other things, the other big things that, that city governments pay for? We've talked about libraries and the zoo.
Well, I think that it's really important, especially right now too, to mention that this is, we pay for our police department. And we pay for the fire department and emergency responders that we all are very grateful to have. And you know, when it's our worst day and we really need to call somebody for help, it's really good to know that we have a good situation where we can call somebody, and they will show up, and they're trained properly, and they have good equipment, because we'll help pay for that as well. We need to buy streets, and we need to pay for potholes and speed humps to be put in. So another big part of it that doesn't get included in that guaranteed funding is things like traffic calming measures. So if you ever see speed humps on the streets, they're not necessarily something that came from the regular city budget. That's something that each counselor has to work to find the money for. And so there's different processes that have to happen in order to make that happen. So you know, when I want, there's a street by our house and in the district that is really needing some, some drainage issues repaired, and I thought we had money for it, and it got vetoed from the state funds. So now it's a matter of finding new funding in order to make it better for the people that live there, that the water is eroding, or the water is eroding the ground, and it's making kind of a little ravine really in these people's driveway. And it's the city's property, not their driveway, that needs to be repaired. But if you want speed humps, if you want different things like that, that we have to find money for too. So kind of everything you see in the city is not just private property, right? It's, it's a whole bunch of other things, but we also make sure to pay for different fun things like we were talking about with the zoo and the biopark. The bus system is another thing that we pay for. So you know, the bus and here in New Mexico, part of Albuquerque, the part of the budget in Albuquerque is to help contribute to the rail runner that goes between Albuquerque and Santa Fe. So, so it's part of public transportation and mass transit that we pay for as well.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. And you say it's, you say like we pay for, is that, where is that money coming from?
So that money gets budgeted, again, like what I was saying, most of it, a big, big chunk of it comes from gross, gross receipts tax. And some of it comes from the state legislature, and some of it comes from the gas tax that we have here and other taxes that come from properties, different things like that. So there's, there's other parts that it comes from, but a big chunk of it, especially right now, that's on the front of my brain, is the gross receipts tax that we, the majority of our budget with that.
Great. So every time we spend money at the store or on something that we need to buy for our families, that we're, we're putting a little extra money in over the cost of what that book or that apple, I don't know if an apple counts because it's
Not on the apples, so in Mexico, we don't have taxes on the food. And so. Others to clothes or books or.
Bicycles.
Yep.
Pay a little extra money back. Okay, great. All right.
The trails so that you have bicycle trails even to be on.
Trails. We love trails and we love open space. And so thank you for, for, for helping us keep those open spaces and those parks clean and beautiful so we can use them. Um, okay. You want to go to the next question?
How can kids get more involved in city government?
So I would love to have kids get more involved in city government. And I think a really cool thing that would be neat to see kids do, and I've had a couple boy scout troops do it. Once we start getting back to some normal, uh, getting together in, in public and getting together and it's safer for us to do that. It would be really fun, I think, to have the troop or different troops come down and see part of a city council meeting. And when the boy scout troop came that, that was people in my district that I talked to, I even let them and we arranged for them to say the pledge for us. And so we try to make it fun and have guests, uh, in that way to start the meetings. So that's, you know, a little bit further off, but for now. The agendas get posted, um, on the internet for C A B Q dot gov slash council. And if you go and see the agenda and if there's something really important to you or your family. You can contact your city counselor and all of us really like to hear from our constituents. And whether it's something they think they like or whether they don't like. Because I'm here to serve my constituents. I'm not here to just decide what I like best. So if I hear from the girls or if I had a, even if it's a kid or a parent saying, I, I know this is coming up as your legislation. And I really think that you should vote yes for it because it would be important to me and my life. Because then that's a really great way to get involved. And I think it's pretty simple and it's very safe.
Wonderful. So, um, before we go to the next question, uh, anyone that's watching on Facebook Live, if you have a question for Counselor Basson, go ahead and type it in the comments. Don't wait until we're done because there is a tiny little bit of a delay. Between when I'm speaking and when Counselor Basson is speaking and then when it's getting to Facebook. So if you wait to ask your question, then, um, we might miss it. So go ahead and, uh, and type in your question in the comment box. Alana's got two more that have come in from Girl Scouts that we want to get to. Nope, just those last two. And then we're going to talk about bronze, silver, gold awards. Uh, and then get to the other question. So real quick, let's go on with the second question. Oh, okay. It's one question, but just read it.
How do you, do you get along with everyone you work with?
And, and then what's the second part of the question?
How do you work through conflict?
So there are some times that there's the nine counselors, uh, in our, in our city. And there are many times that we don't all agree on what we're going to vote on. But we're all there because we wanted to do good things, right? So we have to talk about things and in order to get legislation to pass. We have to have a majority vote, meaning that five of the nine counselors have to vote yes for whatever it is that we're voting on. And if they don't get five out of the nine votes, then whatever it is we're voting on does not pass. Sometimes we don't agree on it and sometimes, uh, it gets very, very hard because. You try not to take it personally, right? But if it's something that's important to me. And I have other counselors that don't really agree with it. That hurts my feelings a little bit, but at the same time, I have to realize that everybody's entitled to their opinion and what they think is best for their district. So the best way to work through it is to not take it personally and remember on every piece of legislation, you have to start fresh. And you have to realize that all these other counselors that got, got interested and got elected into being the counselor for their area. That they wanted to do good things too. And we have to have a real big respect and courtesy for that and keep some, some positivity always.
Great. That's a good, that's a good answer. You gotta, sometimes you. It, it may hurt your feelings if someone doesn't feel the same way that you do. But it's important to find, you know, to, to think about it from their perspective and find common ground. All right. Last question here. What do you got?
What advice do you have for, for someone who wants to run for student council?
Well, I think they better work hard. They better put up some good posters and they better talk to everybody, not just your friends. You can't just talk to your friends and you can't just talk to the people that you really feel comfortable with. So you have to be ready to talk to people that even if it scares you because it's something you're shy about. Be willing to say hi and introduce yourself and always, always be honest.
Great advice. Are you going to run for city council at your school?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, get ready. You should start working on your posters. You got nothing but time, sister.
Project coming up.
Yeah. Oh, are you leaving? Okay. So questions that have come up from, uh, from Facebook, uh, let's see. Why, why do you spend so much money on stuff? Um, and I think then there was another one, uh, yes, why do we have to spend so much money? So I think the question is why, why, why does running a city cost so much money? Sorry about all the beeps.
Okay. So I mean, it, I admittedly, when I started hearing some of these numbers at first, I was. As well, right? So, uh, but now I'm realizing that it does cost a lot of money because you want things to last. And if we're talking about building a road, you're not just building a road for one family to drive on all the time. You're building a road that many, many, many people are going to use. And so it has to be really tough and really strong. In addition to the fact that you can't just go out and lay asphalt and hope it sticks. There's engineers, there's architects, there's permitting, there's inspections and all of, and there's design. All of that costs money. So in addition to money, it also costs time. So things have been taking a lot longer than I ever thought they would, but now I'm learning the reasons why. And they cost a lot of money because it's a big process. It's not just as easy as what I used to think it probably would have been.
I, I think about the times like. At say over a holidays where a grandparent will, um, will give us, uh, uh, give. Alana and her brother money together to pick a gift that they can use together. And how much bickering can go into two people trying to spend the same amount of money? So you mentioned that there are nine city counselors in Albuquerque, plus the mayor. How long does it take for you guys to figure out and agree on how to spend the money?
So from what I've been told, because I've never gone through the normal budget process yet. Uh, but from what I've been told, normally the deadline for the mayor, he sends over, uh, a projected. Budget that he wants and he sends it to the council and it's due by the end of April typically. And the council has to vote on that typically by the end of June. And we all have to come to agreements on it. So we have to make our changes. We have to make, uh, uh, different. You know, different sacrifices because I really would like to get a pool built in my district. And I know that the counselor before me was trying to do that and it's going to cost almost 20 million dollars to do it. So I'm trying and hoping to get as much as I can, but all these other counselors, like you said, really want. Stuff in their districts for their constituents and everybody's important. So how do you decide? And I think that that's part of the negotiations is maybe this year we'll spend money on a project more in one district. And hopefully the next year there can be some trade off. At least that's what I've been told. Again, we're going to have our, our budget meeting, uh, June 29th. So it'll be a special meeting where we get to learn more about what, what the administration and the mayor's office is wanting to do. So that we can see how to evolve for the rest of this year before we even start talking about next year.
Right. Um, so there, we're fascinated by infrastructure, apparently here at Girl Scouts. There's a question about why, why is it important that we build new roads? You just mentioned, you know, that it costs a lot of money to, uh, to build roads and it costs a lot of time and energy. So why do we do it?
Well, so I think that we do it because roads can have erosion, right? If we just had dirt, you would have erosion and they would wash away and they would get really bumpy. They could clog other pipes and they could ruin people's property. Uh, they can ruin vehicles, right? So if we don't have proper infrastructure, then we're not going to have a way for these vehicles and people to travel. Plus it would probably take us a lot longer because I don't know how many of you girls have been on a dirt road with your families to go camping. But oftentimes when you're on a dirt road and it goes really bumpy as you're going, uh, down. Then it takes longer because you have to drive slower. So in order for a city to operate, I think that's a big important part. And then once the roads are built, if potholes happen. How many times have your parents been driving and your parents hit a pothole and the whole car jerks around and it can do damage to the car? It can spill your Kiva juice or your Starbucks. And it, it can also continue to damage the road more. So we got to maintain it because with anything, you should always take good care of the things you own and the city owns these. And the taxpayers are the ones that own these. So of course we should keep them up and running in good shape.
So Counselor Basson, we have, um, one more question from Facebook that I'm going to ask. Uh, and then I'd like to talk to you briefly about, uh, your thoughts on community service projects. That Girl Scouts might be able to help with for their bronze, silver or gold award. Um, the question that just came in, uh, is about why can we not use, uh, city money? To build things like supermarkets, you know, like we, we live in a rural state and some, some communities. Don't have something as basic as supermarkets. So why is, why can the city not use money there?
Well, that's a good question and I would have to really double check and research for sure. But typically supermarkets are private property. They belong to actual individuals who buy the land. When the city buys land, they have to use the land in a way that will benefit everybody, right? And so if you're just going to build, uh, one supermarket in one specific location. And that doesn't necessarily promise something for everyone else, but it comes on city, you know, the property will typically be something that a, a person will buy. Or a larger company throughout the nation will end up buying. And then they will use the money to build it and do employment for that. But what we do help with on the city is something, uh, called the local economic development. And we offer a lot of things that will, it'll be some kind of break in taxes. So that we can encourage people to build a supermarket that will help. Families get more groceries or employ more people so they have jobs. Uh, and that way they don't have to pay taxes on the property or the building, uh, for several years. So that they can really have a better chance of having a stronger start.
Wonderful. So even though the city wouldn't be able to use public funds to, to build a grocery store. You could help encourage someone else, a, a private business to, to come in and build a grocery store.
Yes. If the council does a majority vote saying yes, that they want to use that local economic development funding. And they agree to it, then that can happen.
Great. And then I know I said one more question, but another one came in that looks really good. Um, what, if, if someone wants to build a park or wants to ask their city official or wants to ask their city to build a park in a specific area. What's the process? Who do you ask? Who, where do you even begin to, um, to get the ball rolling with, uh, getting a park in your neighborhood?
So that's a really, really cool question. And I say that because I had an email come in today from somebody. Who said they live near a, an area where there's a lot of traffic. So they have a lot of noise to their backyard. Uh, and there's a big, big median. It's almost two miles long and in some places a hundred feet long. Or wide, I'm sorry. Uh, and they said, why can't we make that a park? Because it, you know, if we, we have that, then there's less dust, there's less weeds. Uh, so they reached out to me and my office. So we reached out from there to Parks and Recreation. And that's part of the, the mayor's side and the city side with administration. So we work together on finding out if it's something that we can do safely and legally. And who would pay for it? Where would the money come from? And we begin the process to see if it's something that, that would be possible. Um, and then we go from there.
But I, I, I like what you're saying. So with a park or with anything. One good place to always start is with the, the person that is elected to represent you.
I think that's what we're here for. We're here to answer questions. And if we can't answer the question, we will find out how to answer the question. Or I'll find out who you should talk to and I will help you get in touch with that person or that department. So that way it can be a little bit smoother because sometimes it's intimidating to not know who you should ask for help. And, and to think it's really impossible. And maybe things, I, I honestly thought that this potential piece of median that was being asked of us to turn into a park. I found out today that it might be able to be. So I learned as well. And I think that that's a big thing that is really, really awesome. So if people reach out to their counselor, that's what we're here for. We're here to serve and we're here to help and answer questions and try to fix problems that people have.
So when you want to, uh, do a, a badge, you want to do an interview with somebody for badge work for Girl Scouts. You go to your elected official and you ask them, counselor, would you please do an interview with me to talk to the Girl Scouts?
Exactly. And look at how it happened.
Wonderful. Well, last question, and I want to thank you so much, uh, uh, again for your time. Um, again, talking about the junior inside government badge. Um, if you are a junior and you'd like to work on this badge, there's this great, uh, kit that's available. You can go to girlscouts.org and, um, and find, uh, this, this badge booklet. Uh, to complete the steps to get your junior inside government badge. Um, okay, something that, uh, is really important for us in Girl Scouts, you know, giving back. We starting, uh, starting with juniors, we start with bronze, uh, bronze award projects. Uh, I know that Alana's troop, uh, with, uh, with Joanna leading them. The juniors are working on a service project with Watermelon Mountain Ranch for their bronze award. To, uh, to do something for the animals there. We have, um, moving up into silver and gold worlds, gold awards. You know, we have, uh, girls that are doing remarkable things, uh, to, to make a real impact in their communities. So I wanted to ask you, are there areas, uh, or ideas that you might have? That, uh, that we can do for service projects that would be beneficial to the people of Albuquerque, the people of New Mexico. But also help our girls, um, in their Girl Scout leadership journey.
So yes, I, I do have a couple of ideas and I want to say one thing because when you were talking about Watermelon Ranch. I think it's a little fun fact I want to put in there that this last week. I agreed to sponsor some legislation for PetSmart to give $20,000 to our animal welfare department to help with animal adoption. So this is also something that we do as city counselors, right? So when we're talking about how does this money go and how does it work? We also work at getting grant money and trying to help out, uh, the different departments there. But animal welfare is another city funded and operated program. So.
And a personal favorite of many Girl Scouts, by the way, we, we love, we love doing projects for animals.
Yes, I have three amazing animals and I love on them every day. So, uh, to answer your question. Uh, there's, I know Alana's troop last year, when, when my daughter was part of it as well. So last year they participated in the Great American Cleanup. And I think that's really great. You can reach out to different neighborhood associations. You can work with them, uh, on figuring that out. I know it's been postponed. Um, it was supposed to start somewhere between June 1st and, but now it's towards October. So that's still something that can help. And that's where, you know, people span out through, through a certain area and they help pick up trash. There's also, uh, you know, it's something to consider is considering adopting a park. So that you can help out clean up a park. Or maybe reaching out to a certain park that's already been adopted and maybe offer to help. Whoever's adopted that park because there's going to be different neighborhood associations and different groups that might take care of that. So if that's something that's interesting to people, I can definitely work on trying to get you in the right direction with that. And then there's also different mutt dispensers. Which is the bags that are at these public locations and oftentimes they just need to be refilled. And so that might be something that we can, we can look into seeing if the Girl Scouts can try to help out with. Um, and then I do have, uh, my policy analyst is wonderful. She's, she's the, the lady that is helping run my ship. So I did ask her to think about other projects that we can encourage and, and advise for the Girl Scouts. And so I'll make sure to follow up with you and let you know if there's more that we can come up with. But, um, these were the, the top ones off of, you know, quick response and everything with that. So.
Thank you. Well, we have. We have lots of troops, uh, um, all, all the time across central and northern New Mexico. Trips all over the country actually who are, who work on take action projects. And, uh, and then again, bigger, larger projects that make a, a bigger, larger impact. As they go through their, their leadership, uh, experience. So it would be wonderful for, for you and I to follow up, uh, on some different ideas that would. You know, that we could then send out to Girl Scout troops across. that would, you know, that we could then send out to Girl Scout troops across, across the area and say, if you are looking for a take-action project, or you're looking for something for, to work on, you know, if you like, if you can identify a problem, because that's what with these, with our, our silver and gold awards, you know, they, these girls will identify a problem, and then they come up with a solution on their own. So it actually could save you a lot of money if we start putting the girls, we start giving Girl Scout brains to work on how to solve some of the city's largest problems. So that might be something fun for you and I to talk about offline, and then figure out a way that we can send, send some of that information out. But, Councilor Brooke Basson, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having me, I hope. And you know what, if you have more questions come in, you just, you just reach out and let me know.
Will do. Thank you again for representing so many Albuquerque residents. Thank you for talking to us about your, about your path to becoming an elected official and campaigning. I love the encouragement that you provided about running for student council and getting involved in city government. So thank you so much, we appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you again next time.
Thank you, I look forward to coming back. Thank you.